I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams. Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spall.
Here.
Mr. Igbal.
Here.
Ms. Dabipi.
Here.
Ms. Inlin.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Dr. Newman, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
May I have a motion, please?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Vice Chair Stevens, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Next up on our agenda is superintendent's announcements and spotlights, and Mrs. Al Radford will be presenting.
Yes, I will. Good evening. Thank you, Chair Seberg, other members of the board. Good evening to you tonight and to everyone that has joined us this evening. As Chair Seberg mentioned, I am here to do what I love to do, and that is to honor some of our staff and our students during our superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing some of our staff. And recently, we recognized our school counseling program at Manassas City Public Schools. School counselors fall under the umbrella of student services. The National School Counselor Association and the Virginia School Counseling Association recognizes school counselors each year for their outstanding and exemplary work that they do in their schools and communities. It pays special recognition to those counselors that are members of these organizations and utilize the national school counseling model in their daily practices to service students. MCPS school counselors are recognized annually at the elementary and secondary levels through the Student Services School Counselor of the Year Award. These candidates complete an application in the year that they are interviewed, and a committee usually meets to score the applications. The candidates that were chosen this year will be recommended for the ASCA and VSCA School Counselor of the Year this fall. Tonight, we would like to first recognize, as I call her name, I asked that she would come forward, our Elementary School Counselor of the Year is Ms. Heather Hartman. Ms. Hartman is a school counselor at Baldwin Elementary School. She is a member of the American School Counseling Association, or ASCA, as I mentioned earlier, and the Virginia School Counseling Association, VSCA. Ms. Hartman was nominated for her ability to not only implement the school counseling model, but serve as a leader, collaborator, and mentor to many, and we say congratulations to Ms. Hartman for the great work that you're doing. Next, we have, don't leave. Next, we have our Secondary School Counselor of the Year, Ms. Liz Thomason. Ms. Thomason is a school counselor at Mayfield Intermediate School. She's also a member of ASCA and VSCA. Ms. Thomason is a huge advocate for ASCA and has great aspirations of assisting her school and becoming a recognized ASCA Model Program under the Ramp Program. Her team reports that she is quick to volunteer and serve, and we say congratulations to I'd also like to offer congratulations to all of our school counselors who were nominated under this category. We had Administrator Support of, Supporters of the Year, which were our elementary and secondary level administrators, meaning our principals and assistant principals. So, we want to thank them for the tremendous amount of support that they give our school counseling program. The last award tonight is for the Student Services Support Staff of the Year. This award goes to someone that works tirelessly to support our students. This person goes above and beyond the call of duty and helps in departments even outside of her own, and that would be Ms. Paula Erickson, who is in the School Counseling Department at Osborne High School. She was not able to be here tonight. She sent her regrets because she really wanted to come, but she had something that came up. So, she's a true gem in the division, and everyone was in agreement that she is deserving of this award. So, we want to congratulate her in her absence. So, our School Counselors of the Year were awarded with plaques at the Student Services Annual Symposium on August the 2nd. Dr. Newman and Chair Seberg and Dr. Thomas were all there to assist with those awards. Certificates for the nominees were also given during that time. So, again, we want to congratulate everyone because we know that they are such a vital part of the development of our students and appreciate all the great work that you're doing. Thank you so much. Our next presentation tonight, the School Board of the City of Manassas and Dr. Newman recently earned the designation as a VSBA, or Virginia School Boards Association, Master Board. Our board and superintendent attended four sessions totaling over 25 hours of professional development, beginning in April and ending on August the 16th. The discussions facilitated by staff of the Virginia School Boards Association focused on team building, improving communication, listening, and board-building behaviors. A plaque recognizing the designation was sent to the board along with certificates of completion. So, the plaque is here. And you can see the certificates that each member is receiving tonight, again, with the plaque that will be displayed in the central office, just to show our public that, you know, this board takes what they do very seriously. Board development is something that they choose to do so that they can effectively serve our students, and so we really appreciate everything that you do on behalf of the students and staff of Manassas City Public Schools, and congratulate you on the achievement of this designation.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. Mrs. Spall, do you have something for us?
Yes, hi. I'd like to make an announcement on behalf of Ms. Williams, who I'm shadowing as an advocate for school board reps. We're thrilled to announce Ms. Vinyel Dabipi back to MCPS as a returning school board liaison. Ms. Dabipi is no stranger to Manassas City Public Schools as a former Dean Dolphin, Mayfield Bobcat, Mets Mustang, and now an Osborne Eagle. Entering her senior year, Ms. Dabipi is a National Honor Society member and an employee of Tropical Smoothie Cafe. We're so excited for Ms. Dabipi to take on a new leadership-type role with our school board, and she has already made so great, she already has so many great ideas for how to interact with constituents. Please join me in welcoming her back. Next, we have Alicia Island. Alicia is a rising junior at Manassas City Public Schools. She attended Baldwin, Mayfield, Mets, and Osborne as well. This is her first year attending Governor's School at Innovation Park. Alicia enjoys the part she plays on the OHS tennis team, Project Lead the Way, and has been active in National Junior Honor Society and SCA in the past. Alicia is characterized as very polite, always ready to learn, and very involved in her church, especially the play which she says is her favorite activity. We're thrilled to have Alicia as a new school board liaison. Please help me in welcoming her as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Board Committee Reports is next. Mr. Hollingsworth, do you have a report for us?
I do. Thank you, Chair Seberg. August 11th, the academic committee met to review the code of conduct. The changes to the code and conduct will be presented this evening. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you very much. Next up is citizens' comments. Are there anybody that would like to come up and speak? Any citizens? Do we have anybody signed up, Mrs. Garza? Anyone at all? Okay, we will move along. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens and a second by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries six zero. Tonight, on the discussion agenda, we first have Student Services and the Student Code of Conduct. Ms. Jackie Sott, will, Student Services Coordinator, will review the changes in the proposed school year 2223 Student Code of Conduct. Mrs. Sott.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Dr. Newman, school board members, and Manassas City community. This evening, I present to you the proposed revisions to the 2223 Student Code of Conduct. The initial review was presented to the academic committee on August 11th and recommended to move forward to the board. For your reference, I have included the following code of Virginia relevant to the proposed revisions. 22.1-253.13 Rights. 22.1-279.3 Parental Responsibility and Involvement. 22.1-279.6 Board of Education Guidelines and Model Policies for Codes of Student Conduct, School Board Regulations. Next slide, please. I have updated the, the front of the Student Code of Conduct to be more representative of our division. I have surrounded the Manassas City Public School logo with the logos from the nine buildings in our division. Additionally, I have also reformatted the entire Code of Conduct to be one column, and that was really related to feedback on readability. This new section is added as per the VDOE Model Guidance for Positive and Preventive Student Conduct Policy and Alternatives to Suspension. Sections outline rights, responsibilities for students, parents, and staff. This, additionally, this section also highlights Virginia Law 22.1-279.3 Parental Responsibility and Involvement Requirement. Next slide. The Deficition and Criteria for Self-Defense has been added to the Student Code of Conduct Section Number 14, Physical Abuse to Others, as per Model Guidance 22.1-279.6. Next slide. And lastly, revisions to the Code of, Student Code of Conduct Section Number 26, Weapons and Dangerous Objects, are strictly for clarification and/or improved readability and are not reflective of legislative amendment. Content added for clarification is underlined while the reformatted or rearranged sentences are crossed out. No other revisions are proposed at this time.
Thank you, and I understand that you're requesting that we waive second reading so we can get this out to families.
Correct.
How is that distributed?
In various ways. It depends on the school. It's definitely on the website and all of the different school websites, and for some schools, they do hand out a paper handle.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any discussion or any questions for Mrs. Sott?
I just have one quick question. Ms. Sott, is this available in Spanish as well as English?
It is.
Both, both hard copies and online?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? May I have a motion then?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve the SY 2002, 22-2023 Student Code of Conduct as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve the school year 2022 to 2023 Student Code of Conduct as presented. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries six zero. Thank you, Mrs. Sott. Before we go on to our next item under the discussion agenda, I did want to recognize Councilman Ralph Smith, who's in the audience with us tonight. Thank you for being here. We appreciate you. And student achievement. Going over our strategic response to student achievement data will be Mr. Gaffeler and
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. Last week, the SOL pass rates were released by VDOE, and in many ways, the scores reflect what we already know, that the pandemic caused a multitude of challenges for our children and families. Our scores, like many other Virginia school divisions, are not where that we want them at the moment, and simply stated, the achievement data does not meet our expectations. Our student achievement data, however, is on a growth trajectory coming out of the pandemic, and so tonight, we're going to highlight some of the data for you and for the public this evening. The SOL results have provided a mandate for us to relook and rethink our practices to best meet the needs of our students. We have been proactive in anticipating strategies to address the learning loss of our students. We began this work during the 2021-22 school year, and it has continued into this school year. We began this work during the 21-22 school year, and I want to also emphasize during last school year and into this school year, how incredibly proud of our hard-working students and staff we have here in Manassas City. We had a challenging year last year. We're returning to in-person learning, and we had continual interruptions and disruptions due to COVID-19. So, tonight, we want to illustrate how our responses are aligned with our new five-year strategic plan and discuss a timeline for further updates on our efforts to improve student achievement outcomes for our students. And so, when we look at our student performance data, our SOL data indicates the need for acceleration of learning. We want to focus on growth and share the growth that we have seen in our students from last year into this year. And then again, we want to talk about our response and how we are addressing this and being proactive with increasing opportunities and increasing student achievement for our students. And so, I want to ask Dr. Casada to come forward, and she's going to share some of the data with you, and then I'm going to come back and talk about some of the things that we are doing to address the needs of our students.
Good evening, Chair Seberg. Wait a minute, I'm too short. There, that's better. Okay, let's try that again. Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, school board members, and Dr. Newman. I will now present to you some of the student achievement data. We'll be looking at performance in a few different ways. On each of the data slides, the relevant strategic plan aspirational goal for 2027 is included. As Mr. Gaffeler said, the Virginia Department of Education published SOL pass rates last week from the 21-22 school year. This first slide compares performance by subject in the 2020-2021 and 21-22 school years. Please note, the traditional SOL exams were not administered in writing in history or social studies in the 2020-2021 school year, and that's why they're grayed out. And recall that SOL exams were not administered at all in the spring of 2020 due to the school closures. The data on this slide show that performance in all subject areas was higher in 2021-22 than in 2020-21, with the largest increase occurring in mathematics of 22 percentage point gain. The 2027 strategic plan goal is an 80% pass rate in reading and mathematics, so continued and accelerating, accelerated growth in all of these areas is clearly necessary. Another way to look at performance is to focus on change over time. Let me take a moment to explain the color coding on this slide. Each color represents a cohort or a group of students as they move from the 2021 to the 2022 school years. This is not a true longitudinal analysis, but rather a snapshot look at cohort performance over time. For example, the blue represents the performance of students who are in third grade in 2020-21 and fourth grade in 21-22. You can see that in 2020-21, the third graders had a 37% pass rate in reading. In 21-22, that same cohort had a 53% pass rate in reading as fourth graders. Likewise, in mathematics, that group had an 18% pass rate in mathematics in 2020-21 as third graders and a 43% pass rate in mathematics as fourth graders. The green represents the cohort that was in fourth grade, the first year in fifth grade, the second year. Yellow, fifth grade into sixth grade. And in middle school, it's important to note that the color coding is tied to the level of the SOL test that the student took. This is most important in mathematics, where some changes occur at the middle school level. So, the light orange represents the cohort taking sixth-grade tests in 2020-21 and seventh grade in 21-22. And finally, the gray represents the cohort taking seventh grade in 2021 and eighth grade in 21-22. Now, the cells without color coding, that's not a mistake. Those represent third graders in 21-22, for whom there's not yet a second data point, and those students taking eighth-grade tests in 2021, right, for whom there isn't a consistent second data point because of different tests that they take in high school. You can see that each of the cohorts had higher pass rates in 21-22 than in 2020-21, which indicates some positive movement or growth. The largest growth in reading was for that third-grade cohort that was fourth graders this past year, the blue cohort, and the largest growth in math was seen in the cohort that moved from fifth grade to sixth grade, the yellow cohort. For the first time in 21-22, Virginia administered what they called Fall Growth Assessments in grades three through eight in reading and math. These growth assessments are computer-adaptive tests, and they're shorter than SOL tests, but based on the same content and the same formats. And they were developed in grades three through eight in reading and math as a result of legislation passed in 2021 Virginia General Assembly. These growth assessments, and consist of test items that measure the SOLs, have been reviewed by Virginia teachers, tried out with Virginia students, and accepted for use on the growth assessments. In the fall of 2021, students were assessed on the previous year's content to get a baseline measure of learning and the learning loss due to the pandemic, except in grade three, in which students were assessed on grade-three content since there are not second-grade SOL tests. In the spring, the SOL test served as the second growth measure, right, so measuring growth from the fall to the spring. You need two points. The table on this slide shows the difference in the percent of students demonstrating grade-level proficiency on the fall and spring assessments. Now, given that the fall assessments were on previous grade-level content and the spring assessments were on current grade-level content, any positive number represents growth, because the spring assessments were really for a year higher, right? So, the largest growth was seen at grade three, which is not surprising, given that students were brand-new to this type of assessment in the fall. And in general, the growth was larger in mathematics. Part of that is because the fall performance in mathematics was lower than that of reading. Taken together, this slide and the previous slide show that growth is occurring. In order to reach those strategic plan goals, however, this growth trajectory must continue and be accelerated. Now, beginning with the second year of implementation that we're in right now and beyond, the growth assessments are going to be administered once in the fall and once in the winter, which they're calling a mid-year assessment. And in addition, those SOL tests in the spring are going to continue to be administered and serve as the final benchmark. So, also, beginning this year, the fall assessments are going to assess students on current grade-level content, so they're really going to be more of a pre-test than they were last year. They're not going back. That was for two points. It was the first time, and it was to assess learning loss. However, this year and beyond, the growth assessments, since they are adaptive, can include items that are either below or above grade level, depending how students respond to the initial grade-level items. These assessments will thus provide more precise information about a student's level in reading and mathematics that can then help inform instruction throughout the year. And to let you know, the Fall Growth Assessment Window has already begun in Manassas City Public Schools, because we started school nearly two weeks ago. Another of the strategic plan goals relates to early literacy, as measured by student performance on the PALS, which stands for Phonological Awareness Literacy Screening. Students are assessed in the fall and spring of grades K through 2. Benchmarks are established for each of those points in time, and the expectations are higher, right, as students move from kindergarten to first grade to second grade and from fall to spring. So, students who do not meet these benchmarks are identified for targeted intervention to catch them early. So, the table on this slide shows the percent of students meeting the benchmarks in the fall and spring for grades kindergarten, first, and second. That difference row represents the difference between fall and spring. You can see that significantly more students hit the benchmarks in the spring of each grade level. I like to look at the Fall Kindergarten Assessment as a true baseline student measure for students as they're entering into schooling. So, this is what we see, and we catch them early, and you can see how much growth was occurring with those students from fall to spring. Now, the strategic plan goal of 80% students meeting the benchmarks at the end of grade two, and you can see that continued growth in this area will be necessary to reach this As you recall, better than everyone, you adopted a new strategic plan in July. This plan is focused on improving student academic success and relies on four strategic pillars to accomplish these goals. These pillars are inclusive and collaborative learning environment, culture of caring, quality workforce, and strong family and community partnerships, and clearly, all of these pillars are necessary for student academic success. Those pillars are also quite dependent upon aligned foundational supports. The strategic plan and the pillars were developed with the awareness of current challenges that we're facing, and the aligned foundational supports include funding provided in the fiscal 2023 school board budget. Mr. Gaffeler will now spend some time walking through each of the pillars and the strategic responses to the student performance data.
So, when we look at our first pillar, inclusive and collaborative environment, I want to discuss some of the things that we're doing currently to address the needs of our students. So, our focus this year, this school year, continues to be on accelerating learning in all of our schools. We have made structural changes to master schedules to support student learning. This work has been, has accomplished, been accomplished over the last two years. We started this process last year. Some of the highlights are, we have built in targeted support blocks into our master schedules to meet the needs of students. We have elongated and provided extended and uninterrupted blocks of time for reading and math. We have schedules that are, that will provide consistent push-in support for our ESOL students, for our special education students that need additional support in reading and math. We have also hired 10 instructional facilitators, two at the high school and one at each of the other schools, and we have also hired reading and math support teachers to work directly with our kids in the classroom. So, continuing on with this pillar, we have launched a new instructional framework called our Cycle That Works. And what that is, is a cycle of instructional planning and delivery around the four questions of a professional learning community. What do we want students to be able to know and be able to do? How do we know when they know it? The assessment piece. And then, how do we respond to that data when students need additional support? And also, how do we respond to students who have already learned it? And so, making sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students. It is vitally important that the lessons and assessments that we're using are closely aligned with our expectations with the Virginia Department of Education, and that's where this cycle has been able to provide opportunities for teachers to really unpack those standards and really dive deep into what does the standards of learning expect? What does the curriculum expect our students to be able to show and demonstrate? The other piece of this, as we launched this new initiative this year, we formed last year a guiding coalition. And that guiding coalition is made up of members of teachers and leaders from each of our schools, each of our nine schools, as well as central, central office leaders. We thought it was important, and we, we value input and feedback, and we know that for any initiative to be valuable and to be, have long-lasting impact, we need the support of all stakeholders. And so, we have continued to lean on that guiding coalition to provide support as we have moved this initiative forward this year. The entire instructional staff participated in the professional learning around Cycle That Works on August 2nd and 3rd. And again, it just promotes an intentional collaboration to ensure alignment of the curriculum that focuses on assessment and the use of data to make instructional decisions. The last thing I would talk about in this pillar is the Teacher Support, Teacher and Student Support Team, TSST meetings that we will be having that will focus on promoting inclusive practices, and we will come together and look at that student achievement data and discuss best practices with what's working for students. Our ESOL teachers, our special education teachers, our facilitators, our reading and support teachers will be a part of these meetings and will be happening over the course of the school year. of the school year because we also want to make sure that each of the efforts of these positions are working in tandem and that they're complementing each other, not in competition with each other. We want to make sure that we are aligned, that we have role clarity, that we can best meet the needs of our students. In terms of a culture that caring, our next pillar, our MTSS, our multi-tiered Systems of Support Specialist, is, will be supporting school-based teams to look at data and to build systems at each of our schools to assess the quality of our tier-one instruction, as well as look at how we are responding to students that need additional learning time. We need to ensure that the, that there are several tiers of support for our students, and this person will be vital in helping to get consistency across all nine schools, that we have systems in place to respond to our student achievement in real time. It is important, also is important to, that we hear from our community. Last year, we surveyed our community to get a sense of their current needs, and so we will continue this year with soliciting input from our families. And so we'll be implementing a comprehensive climate and culture survey for families, students, and staff, and we'll be using that data to inform our current programming, to make adjustments to where we need to, to make sure that we are responding in real time to the needs of our students and our families. And then another thing that we're doing this year is we're using Title I funds to provide a book choice program through Bookworm Central. One of our focus this year is on literacy, as it was last year, and so we're building on that, but we want to make sure that our students have high-quality resources and high-quality literature in their homes so that they can be supported in their reading. And so we want to make sure that they're, that we are partnering with our families, and this will also provide an opportunity for us through our family liaisons, to partner with families through our PEP program, our Parents as Educators Program, to make sure that they know how to work with their students using these books and these resources. When we look at our quality workforce, we recognize the need for accountability for all of our MCPS staff, so we're providing support with our leaders and providing growth-producing feedback related directly to teaching and learning. We recognize the importance of accountability and providing that feedback directly. In a formalized way, we will be providing ongoing feedback to central office staff, to school-based administrators, and to teachers. As a division, we are focusing on student achievement data by school and by classroom so that we can ensure that every child is making academic progress. And we'll be doing that in a very formalized manner this year. But we also recognize the need for important, and the importance of providing support for teachers. We're not asking anyone to do anything without support, and, which is why we hired two new growth specialists to provide support to our new teachers or our teachers who need some additional support. And in their role, these professional growth specialists will come alongside of our new teachers and support them with whatever they need in a nonevalutive relationship. And so they will have that extra layer of support that is outside of their evaluator. In talking again about quality workforce, we have developed a new principal induction program for our four new principals. You all know that we have hired four very talented administrators here in Manassas City this school year, and we are committed to their success, and so we have developed a new principal induction program. And as part of that program, each principal will receive a retired principal as a mentor. And those retired principals have had success in, a track record of success in changing the narrative for each of the schools that they were a part of in terms of increasing student achievement. We've also, we are also investing in our teachers. In the fiscal year 23 budget, we, you all, approved funding to help our teachers earn a master's degree and endorsements in reading and math. And this investment in our teachers is also a direct investment into our students. And so we have 16 educators that are earning, currently earning their master's degree over the next three years with the University of Virginia in reading, to become a reading specialist. And then 13 educators will earn their master's degree and their endorsement as a mathematics specialist over the next two and a half years. And as part of that program, those teachers have made a commitment by participating in this program that they will invest after they finish for an additional three years of service to Manassas City. So we're excited about that. Ensuring that all our priority, all priorities in our strategic pillars are aligned is also a mission critical for us here in Manassas City. And so tomorrow, we're launching a new continuous improvement process with schools, and we will also begin, be engaging in the same process with every department and central office. And so we have a meeting, tomorrow is our first principal meeting, and so we will be launching that. Dr. Casada will be leading that effort as the Director of Strategic Improvement here in Manassas City. We recognize that we are all in this together, and so that's why it's important that we're not just going through this process with our schools, but each department and central office will also have an improvement plan and will be engaging in this work over the course of the next school year. You also recently approved the adjustments to provide more time for our, for our faculty through adjusting the calendar, and we just want to thank you for that. It's also important to note that that calendar adjustment is, two of the days were already early release days for our, for our families. So it's really just adding two additional half-days of planning, early release for Sorry, I skipped a slide. Let me go back. Got ahead of myself. And so looking at the pillar of strong family and community partnerships, I also just want to recognize the work that is currently being done by our family liaisons that is already having an impact. In last year's budget for FY '23, you all approved a family liaison position for each of our schools, and they are already having a direct impact on families. That was most recently seen through our, they were part of our Community Resource Fair. You saw many of them there. That was a huge success as well, headed up by our Student Services Department. There was a long line to get in there, and as part of that process, we provided school registrations, immunizations, vision screenings. We had a school supply drive, and so that was a huge success, and that was a part of our initiative to make sure that we're providing strong family connections and community partnerships. So I just talked about this, but again, I just want to just emphasize that, that we have been engaged in this work over the last two years. And I also just want to, just want to say, you know, how much I appreciate the board support because these new positions that I've highlighted tonight, our reading and math support teachers that are going to be working directly with our kids, our instructional facilitators supporting our teachers, our growth specialists, these are all things that are going to have a direct impact on our kids here and our student achievement here in Manassas City. And none of that would have been possible without the strong support of a school board who values student learning and student achievement. So just want to say thank you for that before I turn it back over to Dr. Casada.
All right, we're nearing the end. As we wrap up, we wanted to share with you the anticipated timelines for upcoming updates to the School Board. In late September, the Virginia Department of Education is going to publish accreditation ratings for all schools in the Commonwealth. So in October, we will present to you about accreditation ratings as well as about specific strategies in place related to the inclusive and collaborative learning environment pillar. In December, you'll receive a presentation on strategies related to quality workforce. The entire budget process, which spans many months, it says January, but you know it's a whole many, many months, process includes resources that are targeted to provide those aligned foundational supports to our schools to support student achievement. In March, the board will receive a presentation on strategies and data related to the culture of caring pillar. And finally, in May, a presentation to the board about the strategies related to the strong family and community partnerships pillar will occur. Please note that relevant student performance data will be shared at each presentation throughout the year. The strategies and actions being implemented will strengthen each of the pillars and provide the necessary foundation to help Manassas City Public Schools realize our vision and mission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Casada. And Mr. Gaffeler, are there any questions for either of them? Alex, do you have a question?
Hi, yeah, I just have one question. Could we go back to Slide 8? I had a question about one of the bullet points. Slide 8. Oh, yeah, so under the first bullet point, built-in targeted support blocks, could you just explain a little more about what those support blocks look like?
Sure.
I'd just like to know. Thank you.
So each school has a 30-minute targeted support block built into their master schedule, and what that is timed for is to regroup students across an entire grade level or between classes, and you can really specifically target needs of individual students. We talk about by name and by need, and so you may have four teachers across a grade level, and we have 20 kids who needs different things. We will divide those students up to, that we can pinpoint what those students need during that time. It also provides an opportunity for students who need some additional, not just additional support, but also need some acceleration in terms of more advanced studies and enrichment. It provides an opportunity for, for those students to receive that as well, without any of our students missing new instruction.
Okay. Thank you, that helps, thank you.
Mr. BP, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Just one quick question about student growth. Is student growth being measured solely through testing, or are there other forms being used throughout the city to test student growth throughout the year?
So...
That's a fantastic question. And so obviously, teachers throughout the year are measuring student growth in different ways, right? But what we have that's common at this point are these growth assessments, which are again only in grades three through eight. But through a cycle that works that Mr. Gaffeler was describing, school teams are identifying where students are in a variety of ways, and we have assessments that happen throughout the year through, as part of our balanced assessment plan that will allow for that. And over the course of the year, we'll be able to do more of that. But today, we could just talk in big picture, but that's an excellent question, and yes, that will happen.
Thank you.
I also think, I would just add to that, is that when we measure student achievement in terms of, of data, there's multiple ways, not just through a multiple-choice test. There are a lot of other things that we're doing assessing as, as we're teaching in the classroom, so there's multiple ways.
Do you have a question? Mrs. Spall?
Hi. I do have a couple of questions that just came up. Regarding the calendar adjustments that we did approve, I just want to make sure that the intent is understood, that we're not trying to pack the, the day, the half-day with meetings so that the teachers have to stay late, super late on Friday nights. So they're just hoping that there's going to be some kind of a cap on whatever the, the...
Expectation?
Yeah. Whatever the expectation is for those conferences. I also wanted to ask, when will that, the comprehensive survey go out? Do we have a targeted date for that?
The intent for that would to be to go out after the holidays in the beginning of January, you know, so to start off that semester, to then be able to inform you in March with what we know at that presentation.
Great. And then the master's process is, how are people selected for that? Or is it, is it clear for everyone that wants to join what the process is to try to make that achievement?
Yeah, so the master's degree program, what we did was we sent out a interest to all of our teachers, and it was by interest, and, and we didn't turn anyone away. So it's already started for this, this school year, and so our hope is if, if the board continues to support that, we'd be able to offer another one next year. But it's nice that they're doing it in the cohort, so their teachers become a cohort here in Manassas City, but we didn't turn anyone away.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. I, I just want to say I fully support the strategic plan. These are just a couple of things I wanted to clear up.
Thank you.
Did you get your answer on your first one, your first question?
I mean, I think just stating what, what we thought we were saying is what I wanted to do.
It is, that is not the intent. The intent is not to, the intent is to give teachers time to plan and look at data. The teacher is, the intent is not to keep them until, or to pack it with professional growth, professional learning, professional development. It is to really provide that time for teams to meet, for teachers to meet, to look at data, look at students, and plan.
Great.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Gaffeler. Thank you, Dr. Casada, for taking the time to review the data and share the data with us. I have some questions that are a little bit all over the place because I was just jotting my thoughts down as I was listening to you. I think, Dr. Casada, my first question is for you. How does, when we look at our growth from 2021 to 2022, how does it compare to the rest of the divisions in Northern Virginia and then across the state?
All right, so I can speak a little bit to that now, and we can dig into that a little deeper, and when we come and talk about accreditation and all of that, because that's where really the growth comparisons can be made best. So everyone was coming out of the pandemic, and so everybody was showing growth from last year to this year. On preliminary analyses, we show particularly, like in mathematics, our, like 22% titch-point gain, I'm guessing that's right from what I remember from looking at the slide, was, was highest among jurisdictions. That being said, we had a long way to go where we were last spring. So there's a lot to disentangle with all of that, but there's, everyone is growing because we're rebounding, and my former, as my former superintendent in Prince William County would say, this is a multi-year process to get us out. But seeing that trajectory and seeing like that third grade cohort and that fifth, the sixth grade, you're seeing some, those are massive, massive jumps, so that's encouraging. But they're not consistent across, right? So there's, there's pockets. Hope that helps a little.
It does. So would you say, because right now, we just really have those two data points. Well, we kind of have three because we have the VGA from last fall. So the trajectory we have right now, is that looking like it's a steep trajectory in the right direction?
So yes, so I would say particularly, I would say it's definitely going in the right direction. Every number you saw that was a growth number is positive, right? And so in every single content area and every single test, our scores are higher this year than they were last year, right? So that's growth. You would say that if you slope, okay, I'm going to get nerdy, if you were to plot all of the growth on a, on a chart, there's some slopes that are steeper, right, than others. And so highlighting like that third grade and that fifth, the sixth grade in a couple of places were steeper than in some other places. And so the ones with steeper already, that's, they're well on their way. The ones that are not quite as steep, then they'll, you know, spike up. Some of that is also developmental with how of all of it works, but it's definitely going in the right direction.
Okay. So, and this is me getting nerdy, like you in this, in the steep slope kind of thing. So our goal, we really want to see steep slopes because those indicate faster, higher levels of growth. So where we're seeing steep slopes now, that looks good preliminarily, but we want to get the rest of our slopes for the other cohorts, get them kind of steep like that too.
Yes, that's, that's, that's a really good summary. So we're, where you're seeing some of the steepest slopes is where you had to see the steepest slopes because of where they started. But you want to see all of them, you want them all to be as steep as possible, right? You want our students to, to catch up and get where they need to be. But the indications of what's happening based on some of the things Mr. Gaffeler said have been put in place last year, and with all the efforts that are going to be placed, put in place this year and aligned, the more you have the alignment, the more you're going to see steeper slopes.
And then so, and I, I don't want to be too nerdy on this because I want it to make sense to everybody. So at each new assessment, the VGAs, because we're taking two VGAs this year, the fall, and then in the winter, and then that SOL, with each new data point, with each testing result, we're going to reevaluate what we're doing and where we are, correct?
Yes, absolutely, and not even just waiting for those. You know, that's the beauty of the Cycle That Works is that it's ongoing. As a division, right, big picture, right, we're going to get those division-level metrics, fall, winter, spring, and some additional ones as well, but those ones will allow us to see big, if there are major course corrections. But hopefully, those don't surprise us because we'll know from the assessments that are happening at school, and as Mr. Gaffeler said, in a variety of formats, assess student performance in a variety of ways, we'll know and be making the adjustments along the way. He also mentioned the continuous improvement planning process that's going to require built-in ongoing monitoring to just do that, so that if a strategy is being put in place and the data don't support that it's having the impact that we want it to, then you have to adjust based on the data. So that, that's part of that same cyclical nature.
And then the assessments or the data we're looking at that are within the division, will we have common assessments across schools or across grade levels? Like, let's say you're looking at seventh grade math, no, not seventh, I don't want to do math. Let's say you're looking at seventh grade language arts. Will they, all of those classes be taking a common assessment so you can compare apples to apples to apples?
Yes, yes and yes. We currently have our curriculum assessment measures that we currently do that across, that give us, they're called CAMs. And so we do currently have those. We're looking at those. The next part of the Cycle That Works, we started this, this fall, this semester with unpacking standards. The next part of the cycle that works, we started this, this fall, this semester with unpacking standards. And the next piece, we go in, we're going to train the entire division on creating common formative assessments in January. So we're trying to take it in step by step, but there is already not as frequent formative assessments, common informative assessments through the CAMS, but that will become more frequently as we go through the cycle that works.
Okay. And then the VGAs, so the Virginia Growth Assessment that's being administered, that, I'm sorry to make you guys keep getting up and down. That's going to be, so the sixth graders who take the reading VGA, that will be on the sixth grade curriculum. So they will not necessarily have had that introduced yet. So in the fall, we're seeing where they are at the start of the year, so then in January, we can see where they are halfway, and then the SOL at the end. So will we take that fall VGA score, and will we compare it to the prior year's sixth graders? Or is that just a whole new data point?
So that's, that's also a great question. And because of the way the growth assessments were done last year, it's a difficult comparison to do. I'm curious to see how the state, what the state does when they, when the growth fall window closes statewide. But what we want to do is not just look at last year, but look at where those students were at the end of, end of last year, right? To be able to compare sixth graders to their fifth grade performance to see, did any loss occur over the summer? Did any growth occur, whatever? And so again, now they're truly more like pre-tests than they were last year. So we have a lot of different ways we can look at it, and I'm not exactly sure. The comparison to last year may be a little trickier.
Okay, thank you on that. Now, Mr. Gaffeler, I just had a couple of questions. We have a number of new staff positions that have very specific titles. I'm wondering if you could just, in a sentence or two, explain them what that looks like day to day? Like, we have support teachers, instructional facilita, facilitators, excuse me, an MTSS, multi-tiered system of support specialist, and growth specialist. What exactly are their day-to-day in the building and the classroom roles?
Sure. So I'll start with the reading and math support teachers. Their role day-to-day is to work directly with students in small groups and classrooms.
Okay.
Our professional growth specialists are meeting right now with all of our new teachers and helping them to plan, helping them to transition into their new role as a teacher, and really supporting them with whatever that they need in the classroom. Our instructional facilitators are working closely with our teams, grade-level teams. And what they're doing there is helping them to unpack, understand the curriculum, what is expected of our students, helping them to develop lesson plans that are highly engaging, that meet the needs of our students, to help them understand data, how do we use data, how do we make decisions on that data? And that's on a day-to-day basis. So we have one of those in every one of our schools and two at the high school. The high school is, has identified, obviously, we can't have a instructional facilitator supporting every single content at the high school. And so the high school has identified priority grade contents, for example, Algebra One. And so there's a facilitator that's supporting the Algebra One team with curriculum, developing lessons, making sure that we're meeting the needs of, of students. And then you mentioned the MTSS specialist, that is a new role. We started the process last year with meeting with each, each school has developed a MTSS team, a multi-tiered system of support team. And, and so this person is helping that team to develop systems that can respond in real time to the needs of our students based on the data that we're seeing. Sometimes we are, we are data-rich and information-poor. And we have all of this data that we just give to teachers and say, here you go, make a decision. And so the, the role of the MTSS specialist is trying to help teams of teachers make decisions about what we need to do best for our students to move them forward academically.
Thank you. And then the book choice program, that's the same program we use with summer school, where the students were able to go through like an online library, pick a variety of books, and then they received those books?
It's very similar, yes.
Okay, and will that one also have books? I knew there were some bilingual books in there over the summer. Will it also have bilingual and Spanish language books as well?
Yes, yep, they'll be going online, they'll be doing, selecting books, there's a variety. They've given, I mean, really, sky's the limit in the number of choices that students can have. And it's, parents will be a part of that. There'll be a, where parents will be given some opportunity to learn how to pick a book for their students, and so they'll be able to do that with them. And so it gives us another opportunity, aside from just giving students good books to read, it gives us an opportunity to connect in a meaningful way around education with families.
Well, I know that it was very popular with the summer school program, because I was there when they got those packets of books. And there was a lot of excitement with those kids to get this ten, fifteen books that they'd chosen. And I know that they were, I knew a lot of the kids were reading them right away.
Yes.
So that was a great thing, so I'm really excited about that. So thank you both very much for presenting and for answering my questions tonight.
Thank you.
And I will thank Mrs. Spall and Mrs. Stevens for asking the questions that I had. So thank you. Thank you both very much, and to the whole student achievement team and all our teachers out there that are making the cycle work.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda, on the action agenda, we have our draft 2024 budget development calendar. This has been presented to us before. Does anybody have any questions on it? All the dates look good. More dates will be filled in. I will ask for a motion then.
Chair, I would like to make a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the fiscal year 2024 budget development calendar.
Second? I have a motion by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mrs. Spall, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the fiscal year 2024 budget development calendar. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries six-zero. Moving along to board members' comments, I'd like to call first on our student representatives to the school board. Ms. Alicia Island, would you like to go first?
You want me to go first?
Yes, please.
I'll go first.
Mr. Beepe will go first, setting a good example, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, I just wanted to say thank you for those introductions and welcome to everyone, or welcome everyone back into this school year. I hope everyone all across the city has a great first couple of weeks, and I wanted to wish everyone the best, whether it be you're a student in kindergarten or a student starting their senior year in high school. I also wanted to congratulate those who were recognized this evening, and especially Alicia, as she has joined me as the other student representative this year. I just wanted to say welcome, and I hope you experience as much as I have over the past year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beepe. Ms. Island, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I do, thank you. I'd like to say thank you to everybody on the school board, the superintendent, and I'd also like to say thank you to Veneal for helping me. And I'd also like to welcome everyone back to school. And I hope everybody has a great year, especially the seniors, since they're going off this year, they're going to college. Thank you, Veneal, and I really hope that you guys have fun, because this is, you know, your last year with all of us that we, you know, we've all spent all these years together in the school system.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to congratulate the councilors that were recognized today, and also welcome our student representatives. Great job, and it's been a, a good two weeks, and I continue to root for a positive school year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. I would also like to congratulate our school councilors of the year and all of our councilors that do such an amazing job in our schools. And thank you to the staff for all of this information that you've brought to us and for how prepared you are for moving our community forward. We, we really appreciate it, and I know the community is very grateful. Welcome back, everyone, to school. We're glad to have you all back in our buildings, and welcome to Mr. Beepe and Ms. Island. We're excited to have you join us this year, and we're looking forward to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mr. Ickball?
Hello, good evening, everyone. Firstly, I'd like to also congratulate our school councilors who were recognized tonight. The importance of the work that they do for our students and their families cannot be understated. Thank you to all of our MCPS councilors for the service that they provide each and every day. And secondly, I just want to say that I really think that the VSBA Master Board training was very beneficial to our governance team, and I can't wait to see how we implement the lessons learned from the training in the future. And I also just want to again welcome our student representatives, Veneal DeBeepe and Alicia Island. It's student leaders like them that make me proud to be an alumni of our schools. We are all very much looking forward to working with you guys this year. I hope everyone is adjusting well to the new year and has a great rest of their week.
Thank you, Mr. Ickball. Mrs. Spall, do you have comments?
I do. Hi. I would like to welcome everyone back to the second full week of school. I'm excited for the school, our new school board reps as well. I'm happy to stand with my fellow board members as master board. That's a very big feather in our cap, and it took a lot of work to get everyone together to make that happen. I'm thankful for our councilors who were recognized tonight, and I plan to see many more in the future years. I love the new look and feel of the student code of conduct, and I love the new section with students' rights and responsibilities up front. I am a fan of the hard copy and agendas from years way, way back, but we'll see how online goes this next year, and I'm sure that our children are up to the task of observing their rights and their responsibilities. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Vice Chair Stevens?
I thought I was going after our chair, so my brain wasn't quite there yet. First of all, I'd like to say welcome to our school, our student representatives. We really look to and listen to what you have to say. Your insight and input is quite important, and it really drives everything we do. Second, congratulations to our school councilors, not just those school councilors who were recognized tonight, but every single one of them. You have worked sometimes harder than the rest of us. You've picked up the pieces. You've listened to families, you've listened to students, you've listened to staff. And I think, I speak for everyone when I say we all really appreciate the work you're doing, even if we don't say it every day. The next thing, welcome back to a new school year, so far so good. I'm hoping that the rest of the school year stays this way. And Thursday night, we will have the ribbon cutting for our new football field. Six-thirty PM is the ribbon cutting, and seven PM, Dr. Newman, if I'm corrected, is it, is it the first home game? The first home game at seven PM against Unity Reed?
Oh.
Jackson Reed.
Jackson Reed, against Jackson Reed High School. So please come out and join us, root for our team, see the new field, and watch our high school marching band in action.
Thank you. And you. Good evening. I also want to welcome our student representatives. These leaders, young leaders in our community, represent all of the students of Manassas City Public Schools, not just Osborne High School, but all of them. And I look forward to working with them throughout the year. Thank you. Congratulations to our councilors that were recognized here tonight. And I also want to say a special thank you to my school board members and to Dr. Newman for participating in the Master School Board training. It took time and dedication, and I appreciate you all very much. And I'm very excited for the school year. I think it's gone off to a great start, and we'll see what happens this year.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the school board meeting adjourn.
Second? I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks. The school board meeting adjourned. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.